Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Good to see you folks in the audience this evening. A lot of familiar faces. Glad you're here with us. And welcome to those of you who are watching tonight at home on TV6 or watching on our Facebook feed. We're always glad when you take a little interest in your town government. We'll begin this evening with our customary roll call.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jane Welch. Welcome.
Good evening, David Smitherman.
I'm Mike Horn.
Hi, I'm Ken Sadler.
Happy Thursday. I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
And if you notice, with the exception of the mayor, who obviously is absent-minded, tonight, our council is wearing pink in observation of breast cancer awareness month. So, thank you, council. You've shown me up once again. And Dr. Sadler, but yellow looks pink to me, so I'll just kind of let that stand like that. We also have with us our town manager, Jane Ayers. She's a writer, isn't she? James Ayers. We have our attorney, Elliot Fuss. We have our town planner and assistant town manager, who has the longest title of anybody of our staff, Stacy Talbert. We have our public works director, John Hannah. Going around the room, we have our communications specialist, Veronica Leisure. We have our town clerk, Dora Moore. And we have our town finance director, Pam Orell. Thank you, staff, for all you do. Glad you're here tonight. We'll also begin our meeting this evening with our invocation led by council member David Smitherman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand and join us.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful, beautiful day. We ask that you be with us this evening and help us to have peace of heart and open minds as we go through the things that are brought before us and that we make wise decisions that will best suit this town. We also ask that you be with all the ones that are hurting tonight from all the terrorist activities taking place outside of this country, that you would be with Israel, that you would give our country open eyes to see what's going on so they can take care of us and keep us safe. Thank you again for all that you do, and in thy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we've not had any additions or changes to the agenda since it went out?
Yes, sir.
If not, council members, if there are no additions, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
Motion.
Second.
Makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Mr. Manager, you have a consent agenda for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the consent agenda, item number 2A, this is Resolution 2023-044. These are the financial statements for the two months dated, the ending, August 31st, 2023. 2B, this is the approval of the agenda briefing minutes. That's the meeting from September 7th, 2023. This is the approval of the regular meeting minutes. That meeting was held on September 14th, 2023. And item number 2D, this is to unseal closed session minutes related to the legal dispute and subsequent settlement from February 3rd, 2022, March 10th, 2022, April 7th, 2022, May 5th, 2022, June 2nd, 22, July 7th, 22, July 14th, 22, August 4th, 22, August 11th, 22, August 22nd, 22, September 14th, 22, October 6th, 22, November 3rd, 22, December 8th, 22, and December 29th, 2022. And that, Mr. Mayor, is your consent agenda.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the consent agenda. We ordinarily take all these items at one time unless a member of the council wishes to pull one off and discuss it individually. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. PJ, you've got a couple of introductions for us.
Good to see you. We've almost made it through another work week. So, if you'll pull those stats up, I'll go through those real quick and give you some tips, some things that are going on, and then I'll do some introductions. So, our total calls for service was 477 this month compared to 776. We've got 207 of those being security checks with 26 traffic arrests and citations. Our alarms, nine, and then our priority response, six. So, you can see that we were down quite a bit from last month. Some of that is going to be self-initiated activities with people trying to squeeze in some last-minute vacations and some deputies being out sick and staffing issues. So, I did want to mention that if we're getting into the holiday seasons and people are going to start continuing to order online and you're going to see those packages sitting on porches, we always have a lot of trouble with, you know, the porch pirates. Folks, you're going to have to take measures to try to protect yourself, get your neighbors, drop those packages off, make sure somebody gets it picked up, secured. We can do what we can in the neighborhoods, but you're going to have to try to be good neighbors and try to look out for each other. So, with that being said, also about the car break-ins, we did have a little string of some car break-ins in some of the neighborhoods. So, I encourage everybody, please lock your car doors. Typically, people will not bust out a window to just go in and fish around, but if they see something, if they see a computer bag or a GPS, cell phone, wallet, whatever the case may be, anything with value, even a little thing of money, you say, well, why would somebody want to break in and steal $2 worth of change? But, you know, $2 here, $2 there, it starts to add up. So, I encourage you, don't leave these valuables visible in your driveway. Lock it up. Even if you're coming out here to one of the events, lock your car doors, put your pocketbooks, whatever the case may be, in your trunks and try to take measures to secure those. So, does anybody have any questions? If not, I've got a couple folks I'd like to introduce to the council.
PJ, I understand you did apprehend the folks that were breaking into the cars.
I'd rather not comment on that because that's going to be, that's going to be an ongoing investigation.
I'll rephrase it. I understand you will apprehend those people.
We're going to do everything in our power to make sure that we close those cases.
Thank you.
Okay. So, but anyway, we've got Deputy Chris Fall. He's joined the Lewisville Community Policing. He's, we stole him from the town across the bridge, not calling any names. So, he comes to us from about nine years of experience with law enforcement experience. He'd done several years at Winston-Salem Police Department, joined the sheriff's office. Like I said, he's been part of community policing for years here during his stint at the sheriff's office. So, it was an honor to be able to bring him over to Lewisville. He's already done some great things and he'll continue to do some great things. He's going to be a valuable asset. So, I just ask that you welcome Deputy Chris Fall to our team.
Chris?
Thank you. How are you doing?
Say hello so our photographer can get a shot of you for our newsletter.
Wherever you'd like him.
We look forward to having you, serving our residents and being part of our community.
Yes, sir.
And also, we had our field services captain, Captain John Bracken. He's no stranger to the sheriff's office. He's fixing to retire here in just probably another year, 14 months. He probably's got it counted down to the hours, if you ask him.
They're getting close.
He took Captain Brian Hall's place, you know. Captain Hall retired and they moved Captain Bracken over, and he's done some great things with field services, and he just wanted to stop by since we were introducing Deputy Fall. So, I'll turn it over to Captain Bracken.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Like PJ said, I've been with the sheriff's office since about 2000. I came here, did a little bit of time at Iredo County Sheriff's Office, and then the Marine Corps before that. So, I've been in a uniform long before I had a good enough sense to be in a uniform, probably. But I worked this side of the county for most of my years as a deputy, between Zone 3, which is, y'all have grown a lot more since back then. I think the city annexed a bunch, and y'all have too since those days. But I have worked over here quite a bit, know most of the guys over here. I worked with PJ quite a few years in different positions, and I'm glad to be here. And if y'all need anything, feel free to reach out to us. I'll match y'all's beck and call for anything you need.
Thank you, Cap. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service in both uniforms.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, this will be the first, believe it or not, of five opportunities you have to speak to the council tonight. The first one is our public forum where you can address the council on any issue that's important to you. Then we will have three public hearings that relate to matters regarding the development of La Sara. And then we'll have a final public hearing toward the end of the meeting, or public hearing, or public forum at the end of the meeting where you can share your thoughts again if the spirit so moves you. So, is there anybody that wishes to address the council at this time? Anybody at all? Please come forward. State your name and your address.
I'm Bo Half, on behalf of the Lewisville Civic Club, and this is Joyce Walker, on behalf of the Lewisville Civic Club. Don't want to be too misleading, but I only put my address down, so don't get any wrong ideas. It is an absolute honor to come back and appear before this board, this council. I think it's the first time I've been back in this room during a regular council meeting since December, so it's been, it's wonderful to be back in front of you all. Tonight, I've come here to first say thank you to the town for making available these facilities for next week's Candidates Forum. It's going to be a week from tonight, on October 19th, from 7:30 until 9:30. I have the honor or dishonor of being the moderator for the forum, and we're looking forward to having as many people as we can out. There's only a few, you can't tell, but there's only a few chairs left in this room, so I'm hoping it'll be the same way next week when we have the Candidates Forum. And Joyce, I guess you'll take it from here.
Right. Okay. Again, good evening, everyone. It's good to be back. I haven't been back for a while. But I wanted to remind everyone that this Candidates Forum will be viewed on Channel 6 if you have Spectrum. If you don't have Spectrum and you would like to view it, you can go to the Lewisville Civic Club's Facebook page. Now, let me give you the information on that because some of you have visited that before, but we've had to change it. So, you would go to facebook.com/theLewisvilleCivicClub. You've got to put the word "the" in front of Lewisville Civic Club or else you will get our old page. If there's any other questions, you can certainly submit those questions beforehand to lewisvillecivicclub@gmail.com, and we will hand those questions over to Mr. Half as he moderates. Bo, back to you.
Just wanted to thank you again for hosting us this year. We're so happy that we have this facility available. It's the first time that we've done this from this facility, and so we're looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions?
Okay. I'll ask some next week.
Thank you, Bo. Thank you, Joyce. For those of you who may not recognize him, Bo was our, is our, was our former town attorney for 15 years, Bo?
I was probably a little bit north of that. Yeah, okay.
And Mrs. Joyce Walker was our town clerk for [inaudible] years. But it's always good to see old friends back with us today, and you have a near and dear place in our hearts, and thanks for all you've done for our community. It's good to see you, and thanks for all you're going to do on the upcoming Candidate Forum. All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, as I mentioned earlier, this will be the first of three public forums that we'll be doing tonight. Stacy Talbert, our planning director, will kind of give us a preview of how we're going to go through these, and then give us a primer on each one as we go through.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, we have a little bit on our plate. I'm going to go through these one at a time so we can all kind of be on the same page of what we're talking about, what motions we're making, and what actually is being voted on. But again, tonight before us is the Lake at La Sara. This is a request for Phase 2, Section 7. You're mostly familiar with the Lake at La Sara. It is a current development that a portion of it is already in the town of Lewisville limits. This is another phase that will be adding lots to that development and also adding some square miles or square inches, foot, whatever you want to call it, to our town boundary. So, we will dig right in. So, again, there's three things that council's going to be considering tonight. The first thing is a rezoning. In whatever property is annexed into the town, as I mentioned, this is going to expand our border. Law requires us to assign zoning to that property so it doesn't go unzoned. Right now, it is in RS40 in the Forsyth County zoning jurisdiction. We are going to have to do a rezoning in order to rezone that property to RS40C. That's conditional, because I'll get to the next thing in just a minute, in order for the property to accept the town of Lewisville's zoning jurisdiction. Both of those zoning jurisdictions are comparable, again, Forsyth County to Lewisville is why the rezoning has to take place. The second thing that we're going to be looking at is an annex, excuse me, a special use permit. The request is for a planned residential development. This would include the plan itself, the site plan approval, and this special use permit goes along with that rezoning to allow this development to take place at this current location. Both of those things are contingent on the third thing that we will be looking at tonight. The last one is the actual request to annex this property to extend the corporate limits of the town of Lewisville. So, then again, once it's annexed, that rezoning that we're going to go through, it has taken place, the special use permit has taken place, to kind of all button it up together for those three requests and those three hearings that we're going to go through tonight. Does anybody have any questions about the process? Reasoning behind us doing it in this order, generally, most people who own property don't necessarily want it to be annexed into a municipality, not necessarily Lewisville because we know Lewisville is great, but they want to make sure that their plan is going to be approved, if you will, in order for everything that they're requesting. That's why those two, they go first, and they're contingent on that annexation. So, technically, we go through the rezoning, we go through the special use permit, the annexation is really kind of what seals the deal for all of it. Okay? All right. Well, we'll move right on, and we'll go first through the rezoning. As I had mentioned, this, again, is going to be contingent on the annexation. You'll hear me say that a lot tonight. The properties included are identified as the PIN numbers you can see before you. There are five properties involved. Two of those are entire properties, three of those are just portions of properties in the development. Again, the request is to rezone from RS40 in Forsyth County, that's residential, single-family zoning district, for minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, same as the zoning jurisdiction that we would be assigning RS40, just Lewisville zoning. Again, residential, single-family, minimum 40,000 square foot. The reason that "C" is behind it is because it is conditioned on that special use permit that's going to take place. That means there's a site plan that's tied to that zoning, and this special use permit will also be tied to that property as well. So, on August 9th, 2023, the planning board did have a public hearing on this rezoning. They are making a favorable recommendation to the town of Lewisville Town Council for this rezoning, and that was a unanimous decision. So, does anybody have any questions specifically on the rezoning of the property from Forsyth County jurisdiction to town of Lewisville jurisdiction?
Any questions, council?
I think I have a question. Let me know if this is the right time to ask it. That includes the conditions to be met that are listed.
No, ma'am, that'll be the next one, the special use.
Jane, you're scratching.
Oh, sorry.
Thought you had an itch over there. All right. Any questions for Stacy? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Are there any individuals who wish to speak in support of the petition? Any individuals, please come forward. State your name, your address.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I am Lang Wilcox, 1210 Forest Wood Drive here in Lewisville, and I am the developer of the Lake at La Sara, and have enjoyed getting to see everybody again and bringing another section of the town, of our development into the town, working with Stacy and obviously all the complicated stuff that goes between working with the county and Lewisville. We've been through that, a very successful process, I hope, and I'm here to answer any questions that you all might have, if you have any.
Council members, any questions? If not...
This might be the time for me to ask this question. Thank you, Lang, for coming up. I know the lake is going to be part of the annexation, correct?
No. Uh-uh.
I think that's the next thing we'll look at, conditions.
The yellow area that you see on the map in front of you, that is the area that we would be...
Okay, I got it.
That's the area of the development. That essentially will be turning gray. The white area is the unincorporated area of the county currently. The portion that you see in yellow is what's going to become town of Lewisville jurisdiction.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Very good. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Why is it indicating a portion of those three lots? What is that about?
The way that the boundaries are established, if you look to the west of the yellow mark there, to the left on your map, that is common area, open space within the Lake at La Sara, and so that ends at that place and has to remain a part of a ratio on our zoning approvals in Forsyth County. So, we ended it there at a place that made sense to make the west end of the lots subdivision. And then on the east end, we went as far as we could with that against Plemons Road and the adjacent property owner, which that land was not for sale. Then to the south, we're up against two pieces of property, and that was the extent of the sale of the property there. So, everything else we've brought in, brought in common area, exchanged some property, and we're... So, the boundary... And so, the boundary was established really with the land that we purchased, Dr. Sadler.
Okay. Yes, sir. Counsel, are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you all very much. Anyone else wish to speak in support? Please come forward. State your name, your address.
Good evening, council. My name is Zach Lyon. I'm a resident in this little blue line. Lang has done a fine job at La Sara. I want to thank you for all the hard work you've done. It's a beautiful place. I like living there. The only question I have is, it's not a plus or minus, I'm just curious. I know we have some annexed parcels that are part of Lewisville, but they're still in Forsyth County. This appears to be sort of another island. My only question is, as these continue on, is there any trigger, and I know, I think I've asked this before, and I think the answer was no, I just need to ask it again for my own peace of mind, is there any trigger where the city of Lewisville says there's a certain ratio now to where we're going to annex the complete neighborhood under some legal rules that exist?
Well, that's a very good question. We wish the answer was yes, but the answer is really no. The only, several years ago, the legislature passed a prohibition against any kind of non-voluntary annexation by municipalities. So, the only way you or your neighbors, or any other neighbors, could join a municipality is by voluntary request. And we're going to have one of those here in a little bit because we do have voluntary requests for annexation, but in terms of us reaching out and doing involuntary incorporation, we can't do that any longer.
That's all I want to know. Thank you very much.
And I will add one thing, too, that if the Lake at La Sera wanted to come in, it would take every single property owner.
I just want to make sure that was still...
That would sign and want to, plus the one that owns the bottom of the lake. We ran into that with a voluntary annexation many years ago over at Sat's Gate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in support? If not, is there anybody here who wants to speak in opposition to the petition? Anybody at all? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Council members, your discussion? There's no discussion, we'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make this first one. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 23, excuse me, 2023-037, contingent upon the annexation of the property.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous.
All right. Step one, checkbox. All right. So, now, I'd like to get in a little bit more of the nuts and bolts of the special use permit. So, there is Ordinance 2023-038. This is a request for a special use permit for a planned residential development. Planned residential developments are approved in our ordinance by the elected body. It is a little bit different process. So, tonight, this hearing is what we call an evidentiary hearing in order to go through certain parameters and certain things that the development, the request itself, have to meet in order to seek an approval for that. But let's get into that. So, again, request is for a PRD. This development does include five lots, it's lots 125 through 129, that are going to have access off of an existing private street, La Sara Lodge Drive. The proposed PRD does meet the standards of our Unified Development Ordinance. The buffers that are required, the open space calculations are met. Our ordinance currently for this zoning district requires 30% open space, and there is an abundance of that. There's actually 37% still left in the La Sara development even after these new lots are added to that. So, exceeding the open space calculation that's required in our Unified Development Ordinance. The site does have available infrastructure to support this development. The portion of Plemons Road that we saw, I'll show you on another map, but that portion at the very end of Plemons Road is going to be abandoned. That is currently in the Forsyth County jurisdiction, and so it's technically an NC DOT road. The proper paperwork and the proper owner's signatures have already been submitted to DOT and approved for that abandonment, so that process has been taken care of, and the neighbors on board have been on board for that, excuse me, the neighbors on either side of Plemons that that would impact, it is not impacting their road frontage, so that has been taken care of with the state. Also, the town staff is in the opinion that the request does meet and is in general conformance with the town's comprehensive plan and the legacy for the area. Our comp plan, even though it's not currently for this jurisdiction because it's in Forsyth County, but in this area, it does describe the area to be rural residential with an abundance of open space. So, again, it is in conformance and generally consistent with our comprehensive plan. Legacy for the area is, this is located in Growth Management Area 5, which is the rural area of Forsyth County, which, again, encourages subdivisions that conserve open space, and that is what this development, La Sara, tends to always do, and is continuing to do. So, you can see, this is the overall Lake at La Sara development. You can see there's portions to, well, I'll call it the south, even though it's not south, but of course, portions to the bottom of the page that's surrounded in brown, that is in, that was a phase that we did that's in the town of Lewisville. And then one at the top of the page that's already in the town of Lewisville as well, that was a different phase, the same process that we went through a few years ago. So, you can see, it's a large development, there's a lot of lots, and then surrounding in all of those colors is a lot of open space with natural trails, with areas that their residents are able to use for some activities. So, this is the five lots. You can see La Sara Lodge Drive, lots 125 through 129. 129 is also going to be accessed from La Sara Lodge Drive. One of our requirements of a development, or in our subdivision ordinance is all lots have to access internal to the subdivision road, so it does meet that requirement as well. You can see the heavy black dashed line that you see on that map, that is the current Forsyth County line. The red line is the original La Sara property that's already existing in that development. And then the lighter dashed line that comes along Lot 129, that is where their new boundary will go. So, that is the proposal of the La Sara land that will be added to the development and also added to the town of Lewisville corporate limits. So, at August 9th Planning Board meeting, again, a hearing was held for this planned residential development request. The planning board did vote to recommend approval to the town council, and they included seven findings of fact. In our UDO, and I have the section listed... And I have the section listed there. There are seven different findings that the Planning Board has to find. The Town Council's findings are a little bit different. There's only four findings that they have, that you guys have to find. But they are sending a unanimous recommendation to you all. Along with those seven findings, they asked that all of the comments on the Technical Review Committee shall be remedied. Those are general comments, like your erosion control permit has to be obtained, stormwater permit has to be obtained. All of those are things that happen after the approval. Once the development starts, then that is things that staff takes care of with different agencies to make sure that all of the proper permits are obtained. So, also, they asked that the staff change be completed with the City-County Planning and Development Services. This is something that we have also had to go through with all the other phases of La Sara. When you have a development like this that is cross jurisdictions, they have certain numbers that they require for open space and certain numbers that we require for open space. And so, since Mr. Wilcox spoke about that one little property that was going from Forsyth County open space to Lewisville open space, we require that the City-County Planning and Development staff do a staff change to ensure that, since we're taking away some of their open space that technically becomes Lewisville jurisdiction, they still meet the requirements of the county for the portion that's left. That has been completed, and we have received that staff report, or excuse me, that staff change from that department, so that has already been taken care of. Okay. So, contingent on annexation approval, there are four findings that the elected body must find in the affirmative in order to approve a special use permit through an evidentiary hearing. So, you can see those four findings before you. I won't necessarily read them aloud for you. They do come from general statutes, and they are also noted in our Unified Development Ordinance. And so, I can answer any questions that you have pertaining to the planned residential development request.
Any questions for Stacy?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Stacy. I think this is the time to ask this question.
Sure.
You know, the first requirement says the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. My concern is the lake there, and will that require any major responsibility on the town for accidents, or...
No, ma'am, it will not. The lake is remaining in the unincorporated area. It is not going to be included in the town limits. And since it is privately owned, it would not be the burden of the public in order to... You know, they have to have certain parameters in place, plans, you know, emergency plans, those types of things, if something were to happen. Since it is privately owned, and Lang, correct me if I'm wrong, then that would not be a responsibility of the Town of Lewisville to worry or to have to mitigate that impact. It would be on the private owners of that lake to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Very good. Elliot, I'm going to call on you once again, please, and just for the record, will you please state the findings of fact that this council will be used to make this determination?
Certainly, Mayor. So, according to our UDO, the elected body shall issue a special use permit only when the elected body makes an affirmative finding as follows. One, that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the application and plan as submitted and approved. Two, that the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Three, that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. And, four, that the location and character of the use, if developed according to the application and plan submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with legacy. So, in order to approve, the council will need to find that those four criteria are all satisfied.
Very good. Any questions for Elliot?
Thank you.
All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Are there any individuals in the audience that wish to speak in support of this petition? Please come forward. And we'll do this a little differently. We do need to swear you in, since this is a quasi judicial hearing, and our attorney will be glad to do that for you.
Okay.
Sir, do you solemnly swear?
What? Like this? There you go.
Yes, that sounds good. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth soundless about?
I do. Okay. Thanks again, council members.
Please do your name and ask one more time.
And I'm Lang Wilcox, La Sara Land LLC, live in Lewisville, 1210 Forest Wood Drive. Again, I'm the developer, and I am happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Welch, that was a good question about that as well. And so, if you have any questions further about how we've managed the dam or any of the stuff that we went into from a design standpoint, glad to answer any of those questions. But we have a very good safety program in place. It was a great engineering process and state approval process. The safety standards that they put on new earth impoundments like we have are really incredible. They've really stepped up their game on the way that they have those things constructed today and monitoring devices that are internal to the dam. It's really pretty amazing science, so we've done everything right there and continue to monitor that very carefully. Are there any other questions that you all might have?
Council members?
Okay.
Very good.
All right.
Anyone else wish to speak in support of the petition? If not, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? I see nobody coming forward or no hands raised, so we will close the public hearing. Council members, discussion? There's no discussion. We'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2023-038 contingent on the annexation of the property and affirm that the request meets all of the required findings.
Second.
Very good. Mr. Smitherman makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. We appreciate your investment, and we'll soon, we'll bring it into the community with this next public hearing. Stacy?
All right. Thank you, council. So, our last and final step, we've got the rezoning out of the way, the special use permit out of the way, both contingent on the annexation, so now it's time for the annexation. This last request is to extend the corporate limits of the Town of Lewisville to include the lake at La Sara, Phase 2, Section 7. And for the record, I will read these pins for you. 5875-294961, 5875-297983, and a portion of the following. 5875-392826, 5875-292768, and lastly, 5875-298707. Now, back up to the map, you can see again where those corporate limits currently are by the dark black line, that is the Forsyth County line currently, that will be extending to include lots 125 through 129.
Any questions for Stacy?
Stacy, real quickly, on that map, is lots 113, is that currently in the town?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. All right.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak in support of the annexation? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Your ex-attorney, Bo Howf, said I should do this, so... I'm Lang Wilcox with the lake at La Sara and live in at 1210 Forest Wood Drive in Lewisville. And again, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much for considering us coming into Lewisville. You know, my heart is settled here and have enjoyed being a part of this town for a long time and appreciate all your consideration.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone here wishing, again, to speak in support of the petition? If not, anyone here wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Very good. We'll close the public hearing. Council members?
All right.
On this, we're ready for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-037. Excuse me. I apologize. Apologize. Wrong one. Wrong ordinance number. To approve ordinance 2023-036 for the annexation of this property described with the five pins into the Town of Lewisville.
Second.
Very good. Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Mr. Wilcox, thank you again for your investment, and you demonstrated the wiseness of those wishing to come into Lewisville and be part of our town as we grow, so thank you very much. And kudos, Stacy.
No, I was going to give kudos to you guys. I know that's a lot and a very lengthy process, but good job, council. Thank you.
Stacy, thank you. You put it together very well.
Yeah.
And ladies and gentlemen, in case you don't know, we do have a briefing the first Thursday of every month, at which time we dive into these issues in quite a bit of detail. So, it's not like we're glossing over them tonight. This is not the first time that we've heard them, and not the first time we've spent some time with them. So, council comes prepared to hear the evidence presented at our public hearings and understands the issue before we sit down tonight. So, thank you very much. All righty, moving on. Dora, I believe you have the next item for us, first item of new business.
Yes, sir. Before the council is ordinance 2023-039. This is an ordinance to declare road closures for the annual Christmas parade. If approved by council, this will be forwarded to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Any questions for Dora? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7B on the agenda, this is Resolution 2023-045. This is a cybersecurity and technical assistance memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Now, this agreement does not require the expenditure of funds by the town. However, we do need to memorialize an agreement between the league and the town, as they're already providing us assistance for cybersecurity assessments, as well as technical assistance for grants. While we have started that process with them, they want to make sure we have an agreement as they are using federal and state funds for some of this work. We want to make sure to be in compliance with those regulations. Staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Very good. Council members, we are briefed on this issue. This is obviously an important item, particularly today. Any questions for the manager? If not, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smitherman makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Continue on.
Yes, sir. Items number 7C and 7D are actually paired together. The first one is 7C, ordinance 2023-040. This is for us to accept public street maintenance and dedication of Woodview Ridge Trail and a portion of Woodside Forest Trail. This is a portion of... This is actually the Avalon subdivision, and this particular ordinance will allow us to accept these roadways conditional upon the delivery of bonds and completion of construction punch list. Multiple staff members have been involved in this effort, working directly, both with the engineer and the developer, and we recommend acceptance of this by the council.
Any questions for the manager?
I've got a quick one. When I looked up Woodside Forest Trail on Google Maps, it's showing up on the other side of the condos. That's not correct, is it? This is the one that runs from Shaliford Road down to, or is Wood... What was the other one there? Help me. Woodview Ridge is the existing road that was extended a short amount of...
We... Now, I can confirm, Google Maps is wrong.
Okay. All right.
So, what...
I'm sorry about that, but I saw the same thing.
When I first went out to look at this road, it had the same issue on Google Maps. There we go. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
So, as you can see in blue, there's the short section there cutting across the Shaliford Reserve.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I could say, it was not coming up right.
Yes, thank you, sir. But we have made sure that this is correct, not just in terms of the naming, but these streets will go into our Powellville map, which, of course, we update every year.
Thank you. I, of course, wasn't here for briefing, but that's... I know where it's at now.
Thank you.
Better.
Any other questions for the manager?
No.
Not entertain a motion, please.
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Part two.
Yes, sir. Part two, this is ordinance 2023-041, next in line, of course, and this is to amend Chapter 27-2 of our Code of Ordinances regarding posted speed limit for these newly assessed roads. The speed limit here is proposed at 25 miles an hour, and the developer already has their first sign up for the 25 mile an hour speed limit. And of course, we'll want to have those established so our friends in law enforcement can go ahead and take care of any speeders that might want to go through that area. But certainly, we recommend and appreciate council's consideration, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for the manager? Not entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir. Council before you is ordinance, I mean, excuse me, Resolution 2023-046. This is a one-time facility fee exemption request from West Forsyth Christian Preschool to hold their annual silent auction and gallery hop in April of 2024.
Any questions for the clerk? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smitherman makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion?
All is in favor.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next two items are also paired together. These are items number 7F and 7G under new business. First up, ordinance 2023-042. This is to amend ordinance 2023-001 to budget for six months of service under Duke Energy Lighting Agreement for the Gateway Project. So, what we have here is actually good news. Yes, we're asking for money, but this is because the Gateway Project is moving along, and we believe that we will actually have needs to pay for lighting even before the fiscal year ends, so that is good news. However, what we don't want to do is have not have the budget and money to actually turn those lights on. So, the first part of this is just to make sure we've got the service in place, and then we'll go to the next part of it, which is the actual installation piece. But this first one, 2023-042, is to make sure we have the money to pay to turn those lights on when this project is completed.
Any questions for the manager? Entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
All right. Well, we're still on Duke Energy, but, of course, while we just talked about paying for the actual electric bill, even before we get there, we've got to look at 2023-047. That resolution actually will approve the Duke Energy lighting agreement for this Gateway project. Now, in this particular case, like we've done in some other areas, we're actually having Duke install the poles, do the construction, lease the poles, and perform all maintenance. So, if a pole gets hit or damaged, whatever, Duke Energy would come and do that. In order to get a decent rate on this, though, it's a 10-year agreement, and what you'll see here is that 10-year term is $184,704. Now, that is well in excess of the manager's authorization, so, of course, I'm bringing it to council for their consideration of this particular agreement, and staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2023-047.
Any questions for the manager?
But this is paid over time. It's not that one lump sum.
Yes, sir. That's over a 10-year period.
Correct.
So, the $184,704, $18,700 a year, and you said that that's for installation, maintenance, and the cost of the lighting over that 10-year period, or does that include cost of the lighting or no?
It does not include the energy costs. That's for the construction, installation, maintenance, and the actual poles themselves.
And if we were to try to do that ourselves, our cost would be in excess of that, or just more risk associated with the ownership of it, or what?
Yes, sir. Based on my prior projects, where we had the same kind of buy-versus-lease scenario, both of those are the case, where it appeared to be a higher cost for us to self-perform that, and we also did assume the additional risk in case of damage or getting hit by a car, whatever.
So, we're just mitigating our exposure to cost and to risk?
Yes.
Is that right?
Besides that, John doesn't like to climb light poles.
He says.
Ms. Hunt?
He's a tree guy.
Thank you. Can you refresh my memory from last week when we were briefing regarding the number?
Yes, indeed. So, what we...
There was 30, 30-something.
Duke's original proposal was to put in 30 light poles there. However, town already has four poles existing, so since we've already paid for those poles, we chose not to have them reinstall, and, again, we've got a sunk cost there, and we're going to go ahead and keep those four existing burnings, so we brought down the cost a little bit by dropping to 26, only putting them in where we need them, as opposed to replacing four perfectly suitable and functioning light poles.
Thank you.
So, if somebody hits one of the existing poles out here and breaks it off on Shallowford Road, we own those poles, right?
Yes, the poles we own...
Then we'll go out and buy another pole, because we're going to use the four that we currently have down here, instead of taking 40, I mean, 30 total from Duke Power. So, I guess the only benefit is we're not having to store those four until somebody hits one along Shallowford Road, correct?
Yes, sir. That's a good benefit. There's actually another benefit as well in terms of those four poles, not just the sunk cost piece, but also those, we're not allowed to put on new poles with Duke Energy, that standard 12-foot height. We're not allowed to put banners on them. However, the poles that we own, we can put banners on them, and especially down in the Gateway there, where we're coming in, having the "Welcome to Lewisville" or other seasonal banners seems appropriate.
That makes a little bit more sense, then. See, I wasn't, again, didn't hear this last week, so I'm trying to get up to speed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not warrant a motion, please?
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Mr. Smithburn makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Manager, you're on a roll here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to follow in Stacy's footsteps. Rather than giving you a two-part one, I'm going to give you a three-part one. They all tie together, but they're being done in a particular order. So, what we have here, it's also on the Gateway project. On the Gateway project, as you may have seen in the staff report, we do have some additional milling and asphalt, and this work is in the area of the roundabouts there at 421. Now, we also had talked about, at the briefing, about having some contingency on this project. Having looked at, this project came in during the prior administration, and contingency was not added at that time, although it's usual and customary, especially with these big horizontal or civil projects, to have some contingency for what you might find underground. So, what we have here is additional milling and asphalt and some contingency that was not in the original appropriation, but it's a three-part process. First, we have a capital project ordinance for this project, so we need to amend that. Then, the second one in a row here, we need to fund that amendment by transferring some money in from the general fund, and then, lastly, you'll see that we're proposing to approve this supplemental agreement for that work with our existing general contractor. That number is also above the town manager's signatory limit, so, of course, I want to make sure to come to council, not just for information, but also to make sure we approve this in the right way with this DOT-funded project. So, we'll start with the first one. Ordinance 2023-043 is to amend the Gateway project capital project ordinance. The total value of that is $219,234.90.
Any questions for the manager? Warrant a motion, please?
Move approval.
A second.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Ordinance 2023-044, to amend our ordinance 2023-001 to transfer that same $219,234.90 from the general fund to this newly amended Gateway project capital fund. So, this is the actual transfer of money, and staff recommends approval of this as well.
Any questions?
I've got one for Pam on this. The $100,000 that we're moving to the capital project fund for contingency, if it is not used in this project and the project's closed out, can that money go back into the general fund, or does it have to be for another capital project? Because I know there's some restrictions there and all.
Yes, you can send it back to the general fund, or you could actually move it to another project fund that needs the money as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-044.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Well, it's time for the trifecta, for which I'm hopeful. This is Resolution 2023-048. This is to approve the supplemental agreement number two from Branch Civil, our contractor on this job, for the Gateway project in the amount of $119,234.90. Staff, again, recommends approval of this particular resolution.
Any questions? Motion, please?
Motion to approve. Resolution 2023-048.
Second.
Mr. Smithburn makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for walking us through that. You had a lot of bats through that stretch, and you're up again with our administrative reports.
Great. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is item number 8A, and these are upcoming events and closings, often my favorite part of the agenda. So, coming up, in the next few weeks, we've got a lot going on. First up, October 14th. This is the Bourbon Revival Band, and this is a bluegrass band, but they also incorporate other types of music, and apparently one of the top-rated bluegrass and new grass bands in Kentucky, and they're coming here to Lewisville on the 14th from 4:30 to 6:30. I would like to note, also during this, as folks may have seen on our social media and other locations, we have a voluntary food drive coming up at this to benefit LCAP, the Lewisville Community Assistance Program. We'll have places to collect up the various goods and things that would be helpful to the food pantry there, and, again, it's voluntary, but we're hoping for some good support there by the community. Next up is the bulky item pickup. Now, the bulky item pickup is also very popular. We get a lot of calls about it. It starts on October 16th, so, please, we urge all residents to have out to the curbside or the roadside by 6 o'clock PM, I'm sorry, 6 o'clock AM on the 16th. Our contractor only makes one pass through town, so the goods have to be out there for them to pick it up. Please make sure not to put it in the roadway where the cars might hit it, but just at the edge of curb, so that we make sure we maintain a safe environment. Shortly thereafter, five days later, the Clean Sweep, October 21st. That is a Saturday, and it's from 9 o'clock to noon. Folks will be meeting at the Town Hall Annex, and that's just two doors down from Town Hall, and it's next to the post office, and we'll have all the supplies there, the vests, the grabbers, the bags, and should have some good fellowship with folks who want to roll up their sleeves and help beautify the town. I will point out, it's also been a nice joint venture between the Lewisville Beautification Committee and the Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee.
And I'll pause real quick. We have a member of that committee sitting in the back of the room, Chelsea. Thank you for your efforts on this.
Yes. Next up, and also the same day, Saturday the 21st is going to be busy here in town. We've got Shalloween, and that's October 21st from 1:00 to 2:30. That one, of course, is in Shallowford Square. Now, if we do get rain, we do have a place to go over at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center and a backup plan, so we don't disappoint the kids there. Now, there will be a costume judging at 1:30, and hopeful that folks may want to participate in that and see the kids in their costumes. Coming up the very next week is our special recycling event. That's on October 28th from 9:00 to 1:00, and we'll also see cars pulling in a line at Shallowford Square, and this particular one is sponsored by our ECSE, our environmental committee here. And then, just outside of October, coming up in November before the next meeting, is the CPR class. This is something the council really wanted to get going, and we're pleased with the partnership with our wonderful colleagues at the Lewisville Fire Department. They have some new gear in and some great instructors. That'll be on the 3rd, 1:00 at Mary Alice Warren Community Center. Now, I have to say, it's been very popular. The class is full, but there's another one forming already, and that one has been set for January 19th. And according to our communication specialist, Veronica Lezier, who has been making registrations here, we already have a stack of folks signed up, so, please, folks, sign up. CPR class is available, and it's a four-hour class with a full certification. So, real pleased to see that collaboration between the town of Lewisville and the Lewisville Fire Department.
So, folks, after January 15th, if you plan to have a heart attack, please come to Lewisville. We'll be well-prepared to take care of you with the number of people that we have trained.
What is the special recycling? What will be accepted during that?
Yes, sir. So, the special recycling event and the chair of that committee, you'll see that they call it weird recycling. So, these are the things that don't typically go into your roll cart that you have at the curbside. It's actually a lot of fun, because they have special things, and I'll give you some examples. They are like juice pouches, toothbrushes, Yankee candles, all sorts of things, even like detergent containers and things like that. So, they have ways to recycle, it's special places to take them to, and they actually have separate categories for all these. Now, for our folks watching at home, we actually have a whole poster on, and we'll show pictures of these things, and if I may make a plug for it, it's at lewisvillenc.net/special-recycling-events. That's lewisvillenc.net/special-recycling-events.
On the Clean Sweep, are there age requirements on that? Age minimums?
Yes, and we actually had, with the Clean Sweep coming up, we're looking at age 16-plus. And we want the kids to be accompanied by, whether it's a troop leader, parent, or guardian, et cetera. We will have youth sign-up forms, as well as adult sign-up forms. Folks don't need to pre-register for this. Just coming to the Town Annex at 9:00 there on the 21st is how they get there. But, again, I think this is one of the first times in a while where the youth are being welcomed, and we want to make sure to encourage our younger residents to join in.
Thank you.
Question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Manager airs. Back to the special recycling, will there be a town-wide phone recording to remind people and to tell them of some of the odd items that will be accepted?
You know, we had not actually anticipated using that particular system as we normally use it for emergencies. However, we do have the ability to, I know I'm looking at our newsletter, and we often encourage people to sign up for the Lewisville Connect, but certainly, if we've got an event that is of major interest, we can put it out on additional channels beyond the social media newsletter and website. Interestingly enough, I was just on our website, and that was the first thing that popped up at me, was the event, so we're pretty excited about that. Thank you.
Just thinking about our urban revival. Have the, this is probably a question for Veronica. Have, working through LCAP, have all the churches been notified that we'll be collecting canned goods at that?
No.
Okay. Let's talk tomorrow. I want to be sure we try to figure out a way to make sure as many people as possible know about this, because some people see it on TV6, some people see it on our webpage, but there's a lot of people that will gloss right over it, and this is a real great opportunity to help our community, those in need with food sources. So, let's put our heads together tomorrow. Maybe we figure out a little push on that one. Thank you. Any more questions for the manager? Alrighty. Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir. Counsel, just a reminder that the candidate forum, as you heard earlier, is next Thursday here at Town Hall at 7:30. It will be broadcasted on Channel 6 and then rebroadcast each day up through the election on Channel 6. The next item is the newly elected officials orientation. This will be held November 30th from 5:30 to 7:00 here at Town Hall. After the election, additional information will be sent to the successful candidates.
Thank you. Any questions for Dora? Alrighty. Ladies and gentlemen, we're down to the second opportunity for you to address the council. This is our public forum. Anybody in the audience who wishes to speak, anything on your mind, please come forward. I see nobody moving. Let me also remind folks that you can send your comments to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, and we'll include them as part of the record of this meeting. Council members? Ms. Welch?
Yes, I appreciate everybody that participated in wearing the pink. Again, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I know it's every year. Please don't tire of that, because they've made great progress. In researching some of the current numbers, a third of the cancers are from breast cancer, and that's still kind of astounding. There are so many different kinds, but, as I said, quite a bit of progress, especially if you go in early, usually starting at age 40, unless you have a family history of it, then it would be younger than that. And also, there are quite a few men that are also fighting breast cancer. That is 20, let's see, wait a minute, excuse me. 21,000 that are fighting breast cancer now are men, so that's always surprising. So, the men need to be aware, too, if they notice any changes, and be checked out. But early intervention is the most important. So, please, if you're a woman, do this for those you love, and if you're a family member, please encourage the women in your life that you love, and we'll keep fighting this disease.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Council members? Anything else? Got one item that I'd like to, you can send us on if I could, before we adjourn. As you know, the Shallowford Foundation has been a very generous partner in funding programs at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. About a month and a half ago, this council agreed to contribute $5,000, along with the Shallowford Foundation, in applying for a grant from the High Point Foundation. We did receive that grant. It's going to require a $5,000 match from the public, so we would have a combination of a $30,000 program grant that will be administered through the Shallowford Foundation. What, the bigger picture on this, at least from the perspective of the community center programming, is we would like to have sustainability in our program funding. Now, certainly, we have a certain amount that we can do out of our general fund, but additionally, the Shallowford Foundation has suggested and offered to administer a fund just for programming at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. In other words, if we have generous residents who would like to make contributions, they can make those contributions to the Shallowford Foundation and designate them for programs at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. Over time, we would hope that we could build this fund up, so that it would be self-perpetuating, and we would have a nice little sum of money every year to fund programs. What we've talked about doing is we would like to do a holiday reception, and this would be December 1st, which is that scene night is the tree lighting, from 5:00 to 6:00 at Mary Alice Warren Community Center. We'd like to invite, really, anybody in town will promote it well, but we'll also want to be sure that we reach out to a number of folks who have contributed to the Shallowford Foundation before, as well as many of the people who've been part of the community center advisory board, our boards and committees. Invite them to come by, have a cup of wassail, whatever wassail is, but that's what they're talking about having. We used to shoot those on the farm. I wanted to run it by the council to be sure that we had consensus and that we would do that and partner with the Shallowford Foundation in doing that. Any objections?
Glad you have them ready, cookies, too.
Mayor Horn, may I ask you a question? With the Shallowford Foundation, do you have any inclination to how often we can probably expect this grant, or is it iffy?
Yeah, Jane, I think that's the challenge. You know, they funded a first round of programming last year, and they've come back again this year in front of the second round of programming. The third round of programming will be funded through the grant from the High Point Foundation. So, we have last year, this year, and next year, and I believe it's running about $15,000 a year that they're providing programming money for. After that, we're hoping we can build this fund in a substantial way, so that we can have perpetual funding for these programs. Any objections? Very good. We'll circle back around and start doing some planning and make sure that everybody knows about this. It'll be a lovely time, too, because we'll have the trees decorated, and it's a great time to get together with friends and family. Once again, staff, great job tonight. Stacy, particularly, you led us through a very detailed public hearing process, so thank you very much for all your work on that. Mr. Manager, you had a lot of time to bat, too, so we appreciate all you do. Anything else this evening? Warrant a motion, please, and to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Smithburn makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, at home, thank you for tuning in on TV6. Thank you for watching us on Facebook. Those of you in the chamber, thank you for being here. It's good to see your faces, and we are adjourned.